Okay, Ron, here. Okay, ready? Good evening. At 6:00 PM September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Also like to announce that this meeting is televised live on local channel eighteen, cable channel, that is. And if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, next, before we get started, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any of the agenda items tonight? If so, you can check in with Mary Ann and you can have three minutes to state your case. Okay, looks like we're all set on that. All right, we're gonna take public comment on each hearing at the end of that hearing. Okay, so ZB A members Bill Blaisdell and Sharon Sangalier are out tonight. Scott is stepping down on the first hearing, so... On our first hearing, we're gonna have our three regular board members, as well as Brad and George. All right, so... Charlie, would you read the first continued hearing?
Okay, first continued hearings, one-three-one Industrial Drive. Petition of preventive maintenance request a special permit under one-seventy-four-twenty-five F-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for an automotive and auto body repair business and property located in an I-one and R-three zoning district. MAP eighty-eight parcel ninety-nine Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, James M. Carrigan, trustee of RSJ Realty Trust, continued from August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two, hearing at the request of the attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Robert Mills. I represent Jim Carrigan, who's the owner of the property. Jim is ill this evening, so can't be here with us. But here with me this evening is the petitioner Kyle Bug, who is the owner of preventive maintenance. Just as a point of information, Kyle's been in business for twelve years, about eighty feet from this location. The only thing he wasn't doing at the previous location that he intends to do at this new location is the auto body repair aspect of it. With my petition, I filed some plans. You have a site plan, you have a floor plan, you have a fire, a dry chemical suppression system plan, which is a pre-engineered plan, and you have a tight tank plan, which has also been filed with Christine Wheelander at the Board of Health. Mr. Chairman, last time we went through the thorough, I don't know how much time you want me to spend. You weren't here, you were ill. I hope you feel better. I can go through it again if you want, or whatever your pleasure.
Go right ahead. I saw it on TV.
That, that, okay, okay. So this is, it's, as you know, it's in a R-three, industrial one, R-three zoning district. The lot size is seventy-five thousand seven hundred ninety-four square feet. The building is seventy-four hundred and forty square feet. It has about nine-point-eight percent lot coverage, which is well within the parameters of the zoning bylaw. Eleven spaces are what's required. We have significantly more than that shown on the plan. And the property, the business itself consists of one bay. It's considered a one-bay facility. It has four lifts within the facility and a spray booth for doing repairs to auto body. The fire suppression system has been installed, inspected and approved by the Fire Department by now Chief Phelan. He was a deputy at the time. Now Chief Phelan, and we have a letter from him indicating that he is fine with everything that's been done there to date. We submitted a tight tank plan, which you have in front of you, to the Board of Health, and that has to go through their process at some point in time, as well as the plumbing inspector's process. And she's satisfied with what we submitted to her. The Conservation Commission had no comments, because it's not within their jurisdiction. And the business essentially is auto repair. The auto, the auto body that he does is very, very limited. He's not redoing entire cars and that kind of thing. It's just nicks, dents, bumps and bruises and that kind of thing that he attends to in the course of his business. It's primarily auto repair business. One employee, which is the sole proprietor and the owner of the business.
That's it, one employee?
Yeah, just him. It's just him. Just him. So, and he's self-employed, and so, yes, it's just him. At least at this point in time. See what happens in the future. It's our opinion that based upon what we presented to the board that it meets all of the conditions to granting a special permit and would be glad to answer any questions that the board has.
I can just say that, first of all, I wanted to divulge the fact that you had called me, I did not call you back.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
No, no. I did that because when you left, I said, please call me if you have any problems.
Okay.
And I was in the background talking to people, and I didn't think you hadn't nor were you willing to have problems. So I didn't call you back, because I didn't wanna have any problems in reference to being comfortable.
That's fine, thank you, I appreciate it.
So that's the reason why I didn't call you back.
I appreciate it.
And so I can report to this board that I think I've spoken to Christine from the Board of Health. She's happy. She felt that we can condition it. She wrote a letter to the board. Jack Phelan's happy, so at this point, I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
One member.
Anybody?
No.
We've got a lot of stuff to read in, but before we do that, David, do you have any comments?
There's no concerns from the, in the building department at all, and I can speak to the plumbing inspector, who has this application on his desk. He's ready to approve.
Okay, before I get into reading this, I think the only issues potentially are what? Noisome?
Board of Health, and it's all in the letter, so if you were asked me to read a motion, I will certainly make the motion that would reference that letter. She felt that that would satisfy her concerns.
Okay, Charlie, would you like to read a couple of these?
Yeah. Let me make sure that I have them all. First, I'm gonna read... So, email from Jack Phelan to Rob Mills. Ray, one-thirty-two Industrial Drive. Good morning, Mr. Mills. Yes, the Fire Department is all set. We inspected the property and we're all set. If you could remind the owner-tenant that annual inspections are required and certificates noting completion should be sent to the Fire Inspector for inclusion in the files. Thank you, John F. Phelan. Board of Health, one-thirty-one Industrial Drive. Board of Health comments. Floor plan with trench drain has been provided along with a septic inspection tight tank design signed by P.E. and paint booth specs. Board of Health will review noisome trade decision at the fifteenth September, two thousand twenty-two, public meeting. Conservation comments, one-thirty-one Industrial Drive. Property is not within wetlands district. None, I think that's all I have.
Yeah, I've got, I see a bunch of these different emails dating back August, September from Jack Phelan.
I think they were trumped. I just think they were trumped. I'm not trying to...
Yeah, I think you're right. They're all, they all seem to be saying the same thing.
Yeah, we had questioned Jack whether, whether in fact he was all set, and he has told me that he's all set. And in the letter he wrote to the board, he's all set.
Yeah, Phelan, Phelan. So the only potential issues right now of Board of Health?
Yeah, and I would probably, if you asked me to make a motion, I would say also comments from the Fire Department.
Right, and...
Because he wanted us to make, make the applicant aware that...
So the tight tank is fine?
It has been submitted, and Christine feels it will be fine. Everything has been submitted to her. She felt that this board could pass it off to her at this point.
Okay, so when we vote, it'll be conditioned upon approval of everything by Board of Health that they're concerned with?
I was gonna say that conditional on the town department comments right in the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health comments included in the letter and the, and Jack Phelan, the Fire Chief's letter. So that way...
All right. What about the spray?
That's also in her letter. That's also...
So is that up for discussion tomorrow night?
That, that's, that's, that's on the agenda for tomorrow evening at the Board of Health.
That's the noisome, Ray?
Yes, yeah.
Are we missing anything?
I think, I think we've covered it pretty good.
I think that, I think that's it. Board of Health and Fire. The town planner was fine. He said if Jack Phelan is fine, he is fine.
Yeah, you've been doing this for months now.
Almost over a year, maybe, yeah.
Well, you do border a residential area, and I believe there's probably some people here representing that area. So unless we have anything further, does anybody in the audience have any comments on this particular hearing? Lot of new faces, but nobody to represent one-thirty-one Industrial. Okay. Am I missing anything? Should we make a motion?
Would be more than that to make a motion.
All right. And we know who's sitting on this. So it's Brad and George and the three of us. Okay. Ron, would you make a motion?
I'd like to make, make a motion that we issue a special permit to preventative maintenance of one-thirty-one Industrial Drive under section one-seventy-four-twenty-five F-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for an automotive and auto body repair business on property located in an I-one and R-three zoning district. MAP eighty-eight parcel ninety-nine Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, James K. Carrigan, trustee of RSJ Realty Trust with the following conditions. One, the board has determined the applicant meets all conditions of a special permit under Master Law Forty-eight, section nine. Two, site plan prepared by, prepared for Jim Carrigan of one-thirty-one Industrial Drive Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by J.E. Landers Colley, P.E. Civil Environmental Engineering Assessors, number eighty-eight dash ninety-nine, or eighty-eight-two through ninety-nine. Date, four thirteen twenty-two. Scale one inch goes twenty feet. Drawn by J.D.R., job number three-four-three-six, sheet one-on-one. Revision date, oh eight twenty-three twenty-two. New design stamped by John Landers Colley, civil number three-five-one-on-one. Date, zero eight twenty-three twenty-two. Condition on all town comments right in the record, including but not limited to a Board of Health letter that this board is in receipt of, which has various conditions, including thereto, and a Fire Department, and a letter from the Fire Department, which also has some comments slash conditions that need to be met on a yearly basis. And before, condition that any changes in the plan require the applicant to return to this board.
Hey, do we have a second? All right, Jim, seconds. Let's do a roll call. Brad, how do you vote?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Well done.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. The board has signed?
Maintenance, I think I said it right.
Okay. Okay. There's one of them. It's a small one. Is it fourteen?
Fourteen.
Running around going crazy here.
It'll never, it will never be the same.
Scratched it.
Well, you found one next to it.
That it? Okay, so we've got four plus...
Thank you. So, Jim?
All right, Charlie, would you read the first new hearing?
Okay, first new hearings. Fifty-eight Triton Way. Owners, Kevin A. and Denise J. Petiti. Trustees request a written finding under one-seventy-four-seventeen and one-seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws to allow for an alteration, extension of an existing deck and pool on property located in the R-three in New Seaberry zoning districts. MAP one-twenty-seven parcel eighty-five Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, sitting on this will be the four regular board members, as well as Bob Cagion.
Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Kevin and Denise Petiti, the owners of fifty-eight Triton Way. What I pass to the board is just for illustrative purposes, because the, without the coloring, the plan may be kinda difficult to see what's intended to be done here. This is an application for a removal of an existing pool, replacing it, and reconfiguration of the existing deck. So the existing deck outer boundary is marked in yellow, and the proposed reconfigured deck is marked in pink. So I just think it would be, it would have been difficult to tell without the highlighting.
Does anybody need one? We got lectures.
You have it?
His ones have the red, so highlight them.
I have it.
Please, Scott.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Looks like, parallel to the pool, the yellow line is the deck on... Can I show you on the plan?
Yeah, take it away.
Yeah. Both the chairman and I have a question, I think. I'll speak to him. So is that the deck line there?
No. The deck line is the yellow highlighted. That's the outer portion of the existing deck.
So there is a deck right around the pool?
Oh, yes. If you look at the pictures that I, with my presentation, with my presentation materials, the pool is within the existing deck. Yeah, so this deck basically goes across the, the existing deck goes across the property line.
Yeah, so that's the only...
Ah, that's why. We didn't have the pictures.
Oh, the architecturals. And as I said, my presentation that I forward to the board has the pictures of the deck.
It's a fairly big deck.
Yes, existing, it is a fairly big deck. As I say, it is existing. We are seeking a permit for, under one-seventy-four-seventeen, for an alteration, extension of a existing non-conforming structure. Now, this lot is in the New Seaberry Special Permit Area, which is kind of the, as Dave can attest, is kind of the Wild, Wild West of zoning, because there really are no zoning criteria in the New Seaberry Special Permit Area. However, Dave requested this to come before the board, because we are within fifty feet of the wetland buffer. So we are currently, currently non-conforming to the fifty, fifty-foot setback.
So you're not gonna go any closer to the fifty-foot setback?
We are not going any closer to the fifty-foot setback, so...
So that's the only real question here, right?
Who's we, when you say they, or they ask us, who's they?
When they, they provide David with a form, does this need a zoning board jurisdiction? And David said, yes, this needs zoning board, this is under zoning board jurisdiction.
Because normally, it's the A R C.
Correct. But again, because it is within fifty feet of the wetland, under one-seventy-four thirty-three, it's non-conforming. And under one-seventy-four seventeen, we have to come before the board for a written finding when you alter or extend or change a non-conforming structure.
Easy enough.
So...
So you're not seeking any relief from the setback from wetland, though? Because it's already pre-existing?
It's already pre-existing. So I'm not looking for a variance or anything like that. It's pre-existing. And as I say, what, the, the standard is the substantially not more detrimental to the, to the existing, to the neighborhood than what's existing. It's not gonna be any further, closer to the wetland than its nearest point today. It's also reducing the lot coverage that exists today, and it's been approved by the Conservation Commission.
You're swapping one over here, doing something like that, and then you're actually reducing lot coverage.
That is correct.
And they're not going any closer to the one?
Correct.
Basically, same, that's why it's here.
Right. If there was no wetlands, if we, if we weren't violating the one-seventy, I hate to use the word violating, but if we weren't within the fifty feet, this probably wouldn't have required any relief from the board.
I don't have any questions.
I'm zero, good.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to just hear from them.
Yeah. Would you like to make a comment?
It's, it's, it's as simple as you think it is.
His hands are tied. It says it had to come to us, so we had to send to us. We tried to fix that a few years ago. It hasn't been fixed.
It's as simple as we think we are. That's good.
Charlie, would you like to read some comments?
Yeah, there's Board of Health comments. The proposed work does not affect the septic system or habitable space in the dwelling. No issues.
I hear Conservation, yeah. Project's been approved by the commission.
Yep. Big most of the only two. Any final comments? Anybody in the audience? Come on, you came for something.
Obviously, not that one.
You're there just to talk about a sale.
Okay. Well, do I have to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, certainly. I'd like to make a motion that we issue a written finding to Kevin, or Denise and Kevin...
Petiti.
Petiti?
Petiti.
Petiti of fifty-eight Triton Way. Said written finding is under one-seventy-four, section one-seventy-four seventeen and one-seventy-four thirty-three of the zoning bylaws allow for an alteration, extension of an existing deck and pool on property located in R-three in the New Seaberry zoning districts. MAP one-twenty-seven parcel eighty-five Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. One, board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Master Law Forty-eight, section six. Site plan, fifty-eight Triton Way Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by, prepared for Kevin Petiti. Date, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Revision, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Mitigation counts. Revision, July twenty-two, twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. Lot coverage. So lot coverage was re, I have a question.
Was reduced.
From what to what?
Oh. So if you look at...
Hold it.
Can I give you that?
Twenty-seven to twenty-five?
It is being reduced from twenty-five-point-nine percent to twenty-four-point-two percent.
So, but why would it be a revision on the plan? Wouldn't the plan already shown that?
I believe it does.
But it, but it says a revision date with a revision on it.
Oh, maybe they, maybe, I think when they first gave me a plan, it didn't have it on there. And the one that I, and then I asked them to put that on there, and then they made the...
Okay, thank you.
So it's a revision in that regard.
I'm all set. Gotcha. I just get concerned when it says revision date with a lot coverage is a revision.
Right.
Prepared by Down Cape Engineering Inc., signed and stamped by Dan Ujala, Ujala, P.E. P L S dated seven twenty-two twenty-two. Design plant, number three. Design plant prepared for Kevin and Denise Petiti. Project renovation to existing residence, fifty-eight Triton Way Mashpee, Mass. Dated five-three-twenty-two. Scale, scale one-quarter equals one-inch. Prepared by Ducks Borough Designs, thirty-four Clifford Road, Plymouth, Mass. Number four. Condition on all town comments right in the record, including but not limited to conservation and Board of Health.
Wait a second. Jim, seconds. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well done, nice presentation.
Thank you. I know, a little confusing.
That's an easy one, isn't it?
Signatures?
Dead trees.
If these have stamps on them, I think that belong over there. We got plenty of signed, stamped copies. Every time I write, I hit this little, you have this little bump.
That's terrible, a desk.
Yeah, I know.
Why would you put that on a desk?
That's true.
I'm always, sorry.
Do you have one of these?
You keep one of those, you get both up there.
Not important enough to go right up there. I'm writing down this one. Comments?
Is it two of them? No, one folded. All right, so let's see. Let's go to Charlie. Okay, Charlie, you're gonna sit on this next one. So it'll be us four regulars, plus you, Charlie.
Gotcha.
All right, Charlie, would you read the next new hearing?
The second new hearing for this evening is Seventeen Overlook Knoll Road. Owners, Michael P. and Kelly Elmuccio. Trustees request a special permit under one-seventy-four dash seventeen-point-one of the zoning bylaws to allow for a raise and replace of an existing non-conforming single-family dwelling with a new single-family dwelling on property located in the R-three in Pompanessett Overlay District zoning districts. MAP one-one-eight parcel thirty-six Mashpee, Mass.
Send that down to Charlie, I guess.
I'll share with you.
You and I.
We'll take someone, then I'll share with you.
Okay, we're good? Everybody happy? You're on?
Thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Michael and Kelly Muccio, the owners of Seventeen Overlook Knoll Road. As read into the record, we have filed an application under seven, one-seventy-four dash seventeen-point-one for a special permit to raise and replace an existing single-family dwelling. It is a one, currently a one-story, single-family dwelling. We're proposing to replace it with a three-bedroom, one-story, with a three-bedroom, two-story, single-family dwelling. This is located in the R-three district as affected by the Pompanessett Overlay District. So we would be looking at the setbacks as are set forth in the bylaw for the Pompanessett Overlay District. The structure is currently non-conforming in three ways. And it's a little bit unique, because the property has two front yard setbacks. It has a front yard setback from Seaview Ave and has a front yard setback from Overlook Knoll Road. The access for the property is on Overlook Knoll Road. There is no access onto Seaview. So the properties, it's non-conforming to both Seaview and Overlook Knoll Road. It is also non-conforming to the easterly side, side yard setback. And if the board has my presentation materials, I did give them a zoning table, which kind of sets forth all of those setbacks. So, under the raise and replace bylaw, the board can issue a special permit upon a finding that there are no new non-conformities created. There is sufficient parking on the premises and that the existing, the proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. So the first measure, the standard, we are not creating any new non-conformities. In fact, we are going to be eliminating the Overlook Knoll non-conformity, so it will now become a conforming condition. We are also eliminating the easterly side yard setback non-conformity, so that will become a conforming condition. We are going to be increasing the rear yard, the front yard setback to Seaview from twenty-two to fifteen. But again, Seaview really doesn't act as a front yard. There's vegetation there. You know, for all practical purposes, it's a rear yard setback, and we are gonna be still fifteen-point-five feet off of that setback line from Seaview. So in that sense, I would say that, you know, we're not creating a condition which is substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. There is a driveway that will be, is gonna be on the property, so there's sufficient parking. And again, you know, we're knocking down a nineteen-fifties-era building. We're gonna be bringing, building a new building that's code compliant. It is, you know, I would say, if you look at the Seaview Ave and you look at Overlook Knoll Road, this is consistent with the development that's been happening there. So there's new development, there's permitting that's been going on on both these roads. I've, you know, given the board photographs of some of the development on those roads. This is consistent with that development. So there's nothing that would suggest that it's not, that it would be substantially more detrimental. And also, given the fact that we are gonna be eliminating two of the non-conformities, and we're also gonna be putting in a, you know, a new Title V compliance system, you know, we would suggest that, that we are creating a condition that, that we are creating a condition that would not be substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. So with that, I will, happy to open it up to any questions for the board, from the board.
I'm just surprised at this, the elevation this house is at. I saw the finish lower level, knowing where that is.
It is not in a flood zone.
I know. It's, the basement slabs at elevation fourteen changed. I was just amazed.
Yeah.
That's a high
Right.
I know.
Particular road is up.
I just didn't think everything over there was that much higher.
Right, if you look at the floods, which I've been looking at recently.
It's, it's good. Yeah, it's good. I was just amazed. I saw the finish lower level.
Right.
There's not many streets over there you can get away with.
No, right, exactly.
But no, I checked it. It's good. Height's good.
So, question?
Yes.
So front yard setback required twenty-five feet.
Correct.
So you got a Seaview Ave, existing twenty-two point two.
Correct.
You got proposed fifteen point five.
Correct.
Why?
So you're expanding an non-conformity.
We're increasing, we're not creating a new one.
That's correct.
And we're, we're doing that because in order to make the Overlook Knoll Road setback conforming, we're pushing the house back.
Okay, but you got a little, you got quite a big bump out there.
Uh, it's about, yeah, seven feet. And again, you know, if you look at the property and you take a practical look at it, it's really, it's really functions as a rear yard setback, which would be fifteen feet in the Pompanesett Overlay District.
Seems, your checklist, that's the one that kind of popped out as, if there's any concern, I'm not saying this is
Right.
A big one, but it's a concern.
Sure.
That's the one in your checklist that would be for me.
Well, again, when we look at it in totality, we're looking at a substantially, you know, substantially not more detrimental than what currently exists. And again, we're eliminating two of the non-conformities. We're creating a compliant, building code compliant home, because the original home was built in the nineteen fifties. We're putting in a new Title V system. And again, this, this development, this house is consistent, proposal is consistent when it's being built in and around there. You know, we have a unique situation where this particular house has two streets on both sides. You know, and you don't, a lot of lots don't have that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've seen that before.
I know. I agree with you.
Right. So if there was no Seaview Ave, and it was just a neighbor, all we'd have to be is fifteen feet off, and we're fifteen point five.
Yeah, it's unique.
It is.
Are there any houses on that side? So if you're going down Seaview, are there houses on the left? In other words, where this backyard is? Or all the houses face off of
Overlook? I think everything faces overlook.
So all the houses that are on overlook, my understanding is they have to access overlook. They cannot access Seaview.
So if you're going down Seaview, there's no houses on the left?
No, there is, but they just don't have driveways going on to Seaview.
I'm sorry?
There's houses on the left, but they're
Facing, they're facing overlook.
They don't have the address to Seaview.
So my, yeah, my question is, are there any that face?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I'm not a
So that's the one they face on?
They face, they face overlook Knoll Road.
No, no.
If you go down Seaview, then all of those are on overlook.
All the roads that are in between Seaview, all the houses that are in between Seaview and overlook, face overlook.
What about houses that are only on Seaview?
On the right, they're facing Seaview.
On the other side, they face Seaview.
That, all right, so there could be a house behind this law, that faces Seaview, that faces the back of this house.
There is.
There is. There absolutely is.
That's all, that's
Yeah, there absolutely is.
So there's a house right there that faces that.
Yeah, I think they're pretty much
Some of those properties have driveways, some of those have driveways on both sides, but they all face overlook.
Right. I don't think they're, I don't think they're supposed to, but they do.
They might not supposed, they're probably not supposed to.
As you said earlier, it's a hardship. You have to
Yeah, but this, their
Front yard.
Their proposed only has a driveway on overlook. They don't show a driveway on right street.
I'm just saying that the fifteen-five dimension, there's somebody across the street from the fifteen-five dimension.
Right, but there's somebody across the street.
Yes.
So you have a
I'm not saying that's a
Right.
I'm just saying that there is
I'm almost positive every house on overlook, if you go down overlook, every house on the right is facing overlook.
I believe that is correct.
If you go down Seaview, every house on the right is facing Seaview.
Correct.
They're all looking back at houses. I built one down there years ago.
So you'd have, you'd have the fifteen feet that we're proposing, plus you'd have the dimension of the road, plus you'd have whatever setback that house on Seaview would have.
How many, how many cars will this
Uh, it's a single family. So it's a three-bedroom, single-family, so I think you could have, you know, there's sufficient parking for two cars.
That's the question.
Yes.
So there's no garage?
There's no garage proposed.
Did you see the note that you can't drive a rubber tire vehicle, a rubber tire vehicle over, can't park a rubber tire vehicle over the septic system? There's a note on the site plan. I've never seen that before. No rubber tire vehicles allowed over soil absorption system.
Oh.
Septic system wants its top to be staked off.
Right, so they, but
They can't even park there during construction.
Right.
And it's an H twenty tank.
Well, that's a tank I'm talking about. It's a leaching field.
So that's the tank. So that's the tank, and that's an H twenty tank. You can put a, you can drive a car over. See right here, it's an H twenty?
Yes. It's this whole leaching field right here.
So if he didn't landscape that, what they don't wanna do is have a car parked.
They don't want vehicles over during construction either. They want it all stayed. For what's now, force of man, until they go through.
I just got a minor point on, uh, the bulkhead, that's gonna be a clamshell bulkhead.
Yes, that's correct, because otherwise, if you have that pull-up bulkhead, it doesn't affect the setbacks. So you, it doesn't encroach on the setbacks if you have that type of bulkhead.
Yeah, we've never had an issue with bulkheads unless they built the dog.
Exactly. Yeah, but that would be, that's accurate.
It is a finished lower level, I see, but there's, there were some comments about them.
Yeah, the Board of Health stated that those could not be considered bedrooms.
Does it have dry wells?
I don't see any on the site.
In this area, we should have dry wells. See an outside outdoor shower.
There is an outdoor shower proposed.
Doing away with the old leach field, which is here.
Right.
There's nothing noted on the site plan about, um heat conditioning.
I mean, if the board were to condition, I'm sure
You have any issues, 'cause
No.
The runoff over there.
So all
Down in that area.
All roof and sheet drainage will be, will be
Into dry wells.
And sent to dry wells and collected underground.
And plus that outdoor shower. See it right here?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't foresee that being an issue.
I don't know if it's conditioned outdoor shower, because I don't think an outdoor shower is actually
No, they shouldn't be.
They're not really legal.
I don't believe
You're supposed to tie it into the septic system. But it has them.
David, what do you think about the outdoor shower? What's that? What do you think about the outdoor shower?
David, everywhere.
What about, yeah, but what about tying it into a drain?
They're not usually, they're not usually done that. They usually, usually have a drain.
The way I've always, it's never been enforced, but I think if you talk to Board of Health, it's supposed to be tied into a septic system, but
How come we don't have a comment from them?
Right.
They never do. They, it's just one of those things that, because you can just change, don't call it an outdoor shower. You can call it a rinse station, a dog wash.
It's a rinse station.
If you call
And they go right into the ground where they have
It does say shower. All it says is shower, but you need to change the wording on it, and then it's
Right. Well, as I said, the Board of Health did, did review it, and they did approve it. And my guess is if they had a concern about it, they would have required it to be tied in.
It's Cape Cod. Everybody has one, but they're not supposed to call it a shower.
There was something, there's something in, there is a requirement for, I just took the test. I may have failed that question. Actually, I did, I passed it.
It's something I don't
And I think, I think it has to be part of the system, but I'm not sure.
That's the way I was always told, that we just gotta change in the word wording. I'd call it something else.
So condition unchanged, so we just make sure that that is reviewed by the Board of Health?
Well, she didn't comment on it.
Well, I mean, it has been reviewed.
That's why, I thought that's why they would call rinse, rinse stations.
I would just
I want to see dry well.
Yeah, so
I would condition change in the name.
Can we talk about language of dry wells, please?
Absolutely.
All right, so I have a questions, or I have a statement. All sheet drainage, roof drainage, so sheet drainage and surface drainage, right? Sheet drainage, drainage and roof drainage shall be collected into a subsurface, sub-surface system.
If that's
Which is a dry well.
Yeah, that's fine.
Means below surface.
He's making it, because he took this test. He's making it sound fancy.
I don't, I don't see any problem with that condition.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
I would just condition change in compared to a, then exterior shower, non- exterior shower.
Uh, the only two comments I have is the, as far as the Conservation Commission, property is not within Wetlands jurisdiction. As far as the Board of Health, Board of Health comments, a septic design plan has been approved for three bedrooms. The floor plans depict three bedrooms, rooms that meet the BOH bedroom definition. The exercise room and the office in the basement cannot be considered or used as bedrooms, as they do not have proper legal egress. The raise and replacement of the dwelling will also require an asbestos and rodent inspection prior to approval of the DEMO building permit. Those big conditions.
And I believe the pest inspection on the asbestos has already been done and now uploaded into the permitting, E permitting file.
So did you wanna deal with the shower now?
I, I think these, only, I, it should be just worded differently on the plan, so it's not on the plan as a shower. It should just condition
We wanna put it as a rinse station.
Just change, that way it's not an issue.
That's fine.
Condition it to change the, the just eliminate the shower exterior. They can call whatever they want after that.
So eliminate exterior shower, correct?
No, they don't wanna, they wanna keep the
They wanna keep the shower. Well, it's not shower. You can change, I, I don't wanna say change it to this.
Right.
Just say eliminate the shower. They come back and call it something else.
Call it a rinse station.
Now it's not an issue.
You just pipe it into the septic system?
No, you can only have that one pipe leaving the house. So you'd have to tie it into a drain that leaves the house to forge pipe that goes into your septic tank.
It's a raised outdoor shower.
You don't wanna do that.
Yeah, so
Every time it rains, it's just putting water in the
I don't think that the outdoor shower's gonna make or break, you know.
No.
They're wanting to go for it, so they need to revise it and they'll call it a rinse station.
Problem is, if we, so if we specifically eliminated in, in my motion, if I were asked to make one, then you're not gonna have one.
Correct, but if I come back with a, well, I guess the question is, if I come back with a plan and give it to Dave and it says rinse station, do I need to come back for a modification?
The way it is, if Board of Health doesn't
Yeah, all right, I'm fine with it.
Someone brought up.
I know, it's me. I
I'm just, you know, I'm just
The, the engineers on the Cape know not the right shower.
Right.
This guy's from Cape. I'm sure it's, it's a beautiful plan. He just, in Plymouth, they probably
Right, don't, so as I say, because what I guess I would wanna do is if you, if you eliminate, say eliminate the outdoor shower, I give Dave a plan that says rinse station, is he gonna say, well, now I gotta come back for a modification, so? I, if the Board of Health hasn't commented on it, I would suggest the board leave it alone, because it's really a Board of Health issue.
I know, it is. Totally. It's a hundred percent a Board of Health issue. I'm fine with it. I'm good. I was just trying to draw the eyes.
No, I understand.
I am shocked in that area that they didn't demand the dry wells in that whole Pompanesett area.
That's a conservation
Will save the day.
Maybe if this was in the flood zone, they probably would, but it's out of the flood zone, they probably didn't have as much an issue. I think that's the only reason they did it, because it wasn't in the flood zone.
Well, right, it did not have to go before conservation, so that might have been something that conservation would have required.
That's why they didn't comment on it.
Okay.
So nothing we can do.
Any final questions before we open it up to? Anybody?
Good.
Is it, nothing? All right, anybody in the audience? Come on down. We need your name and address, and you've got your three minutes.
We're gonna stop by for coffee after the meeting.
Um, my name is Nancy Vinat. I live on Seaview Ave, Seventeen Seaview Ave, which is directly behind this property. So any questions you have about which way the house is faced? We're all from Seaview Ave, and we're very concerned about construction parking. All summer, the house at the end of the street was under construction, and the whole street was filled with construction vehicles. It was unsafe. Sometimes it blocked the road. It, it was just a mess. I have to go down and ask people to move their car so I could get out of my driveway. It's not even on our street. So we were wondering if something could be put into the plan that would say, park it on overlook.
I don't think we have jurisdiction to do that.
No, it's
I understand it, because I build in Pompanesett all the time, and we have difficulty, have neighbors asking us all the time, can you not park here? We have to park down other streets. It's hard. It's difficult, but I don't think as a zoning board, we have any jurisdiction to condition that.
Oh, when I called, they said, come to the meeting, and
Well, I'll make your comments. I think it's good. I think we can
I think David, if I were in her situation, I called you, what would you do if anything?
Well Is there, is there like a rule of, in Pompanesett, where two wheels have to be off the road?
So where you parked
So that's all I could do. I mean, basically
You were at my house today.
Okay.
And you parked in front of my house. If there was a construction vehicle parked on their side No, you were fine. Um, but if there was a if there was a construction vehicle on the other side of the street, it would make the street impassable.
So, so this, this issue was raised before we came in, one of the other neighbors, and, and the homeowner's here, Mr. Muccio's here. So his brother-in-law, my understanding, his brother-in-law is the contractor. I think he'll do whatever needs to be done to make sure that the parking's on overlook.
We encourage.
That's fine. I don't
Whoever builds the home to please take into consideration the neighbors and when they
I, as a builder, when the neighbor says, can you please not park in front, we make a point not to park.
Right.
I've had neighbors say, it's the summer, my kids are here, they're playing in front of you. Can you not have you guys park in front of this house? We'll do everything we can not to.
Is the builder here?
No, but the homeowner's here, and his brother-in-law is the general contractor.
I also, is it Susan?
Nancy.
Nancy, sorry.
Michael, come on up, come on up. Come on up, and if you would
Just introduce yourself a little.
I do.
Name and address.
Seventeen Overlook Knoll. I also rented on Seaview for, from Arthur Barrett, for four years, until he sold the house.
Is that just the gray house?
What number was it, John?
You guys gotta talk to, talk to the board.
Talk to the board. So, and I do, and I know exactly who you're talking about, if, because, um, somebody on Seaview who has a dri, I mean, somebody on overlook who has a driveway, for some reason, on Seaview
So I have a question for you.
They used to park there, and you're right, it would block the entire road, so I will do my best to make sure that they park on overlook, because we have the driveway and they have it in front of our house. It should be parked now. I also am hoping the house is done before next summer, but
Everybody does, but it never happens.
I think we're hearing, at least if I were asked to make a motion, both gentlemen next to me shook their, like this, where I said, in the motion would be, we would encourage that whomever builds this home, that make sure that they police the area in reference to parking issues and keeping the residents abutting the property and the general area happy, as best that person can do. We cannot, we cannot condition it to the degree
Can I, can I offer you guys at least myself for number two, if somebody is unsure you call me?
Great.
And let me
That's what we wanna hear. Write this.
Okay.
And I think your other option is if, if they are not listening to you, if you're asking it, and they're blocking the road, you think a car can't pass, I think you just call the police.
Absolutely.
They're gonna come down and say, you gotta go.
I believe
I'd like to move them for you first, if we, so you're gonna have to deal, so you're gonna have to deal with that. But I, but again, when I rented on, um, your street, I remember that if anybody parked on the other side, you couldn't back out.
Right.
Yeah.
There's something, the street is narrower than most, so you can't park on both sides.
If I'm asked to make a motion, we will put, I would put, I will put something in the motion, at least trying to do something.
So I won't do any more
Whatever you can do.
Yep.
I refuse to work on Wilson's Grove, because you can't park, you can't get anything down there.
Right.
It's a night
Yeah.
That's the worst road out there.
It is. All right. Don't I have
You can't get a delivery.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I think that's it. Thank you. Thank you for your help on that.
Thank you.
Not sure. Okay, Ron, would you like to make a motion, please?
I would. I have a lot of scribble, yes, so we're gonna see how this works. So, I'd like to make a motion that we issue a special permit to Kelly L. and Michael P. Muccio of Seventeen Overlook Knoll Road under Section One Seventy-Four Seventeen One of the zoning bylaw to allow for a raise and replace an existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling with a new, single-family dwelling and property located in R3 Pompanesett Overlay District, zoning, zoning district, map One Eighteen, Parcel Thirty-Six, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. One, board has determined the applicant meets all the conditions of the special permit under Mastering Law's Forty-Eight, Section Nine. Two, existing plot plan prepared for Seventeen Overlook Knoll Roads, one inch rules, ten feet, dated March seventh, Twenty Twenty-Two, prepared by Flaherty Stefani, Inc., Plymouth, Mass. Number three, proposed sewage disposal plan prepared for Michael P. and Kelly Almucio, Muccio, Seventeen Overlook Knoll Road, dated August second, Twenty Twenty-Two, drawn by MMF, scale one inch rules, ten feet. DWG Seventeen Overlook Knoll Site Eight Two Twenty-Two, prepared by Flaherty and Stefani, Inc., last year. Four, house plans, Mucci residence, Seventeen Overlook Knoll Road, prepared by Design by S P B, Pocasset, Mass., plan date six twenty-four twenty-two, scale one quarter equals one foot. A one, proposed left elevation, right elevation, front elevation, rear elevation. A two, proposed front, first floor, second floor layout. S one, finished basement layout, foundation plan. S two, first and second floor framing. S three, roof ceiling plan. Condition, number five, condition in all town comments written in the record, including but not limited to Board of Health. Number six, condition that all change plan require the applicant to return to the board. Number seven, all sheet drainage and roof drainage, this is actually a correction to the plan, which would actually be
the plan, which would actually be depicted on number two, which is the plot plan, and the, I guess, sewage disposal plan. It would have to include, and prior to the issuance of the building permit, the inclusion of sheet drainage and roof drainage being collected and dispersed into sub, subsurface, into a subsurface system. Number three, or actually, number eight, we, as a board, encourage the person who will be building this home to work with the neighbors in reference to parking, any and all parking, or, um, you know, congestion issues, and to try and keep them away from the town's